Clerk, when you're not otherwise occupied and we'll wait for you, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Delick.
Present.
Councilmember Alinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Garrison will be arriving late. Councilmember Howdy.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pepper.
Here.
Mayor Jones. Here. Okay, the next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have Milt Kruever, who will come up and lead us in the pledge, and if you would just come up and share with us a little bit of information, I know that you're a veteran.
Well, I'm a veteran, yes, I spent 20 years in Marine Corps, but we have many veterans in this room, Charlie Crick, I know, and his brother was lost in Vietnam, there are a lot of stories here in this room, and I won't bore anyone with any of them, but I do want to say that especially with the things going on in our country today and overseas, we need to think of our veterans that are serving right now.
Absolutely.
And leave them in your thoughts and prayers.
Absolutely, okay.
Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, if you'd please join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a certificate for you. So you'll have to come back.
Of my colleagues here on the City Council, we would like to present this fifth citizen statue award to you, and thank you for all the generous community. Because saying the Pledge of Allegiance is just a small part, it's a whole lot of other things, so enjoy worship.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is Brief Summary of Current Events by Mayor, City Council, and/or the City Manager, and tonight we have Rudy Rodriguez as Acting City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless a specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Rodriguez.
Just a second, Mayor, I seem to have lost my pages here.
That's what happens with iPads sometimes.
I know.
You want me to go ahead for a minute?
If you wouldn't mind, Mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
I had the privilege Friday of going to the elementary school and reading to two third grade classes on Read Across America and Dr. Seuss Day, and some of them are still shorter than me, but I'm looking at them eye to eye. They're getting bigger every year, they're getting bigger and bigger, but we went to the assembly, and those kids are so enthusiastic, it's a lot of fun to watch them from the third grade to sixth grade, and we've got a lot of good leaders coming up in our elementary schools and in our public schools.
Council, anything else? Find it yet, Rudy? If not, I'll...
Please, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead. All right, so, February 20th, 20th, we had a general plan open house, and it sure would be great if we could get more participation, we'd really love our citizens to help us out with this, because it's their plan, but we had a fairly good attendance, and we will be having another open house on March 26, 2014, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. In the meantime, you can read the general plan, the proposed plan, on the Internet, www.cottonwoodaz.gov, and you can make comments also. So, on May 6th, okay, on April 21st, then the plan will go to the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 6th, it will go to the City Council, and on November 4th, it will go to the citizens of Cottonwood to vote on. On the 21st, I attended a League of Women Voters Brunch, it was called, and I spoke there, also Barbara Latrell, who's a councillor of Sedona, and Robin Watley of Camp Verde, and we talked about women in government, and we had a special conversation with women about politics, and we were celebrating the League of Women Voters' 94th years in fighting to protect the right to vote for all, and we answered questions like, why did you run for public office? I also want to just take a moment to think about the Phoenix police officer who was killed yesterday and the two wounded, as I tried to research, I didn't find any place that shared their names yet, so just keeping them in your thoughts and prayers, their families, and Police Chief Daniel Garcia stated, "This is the worst part of policing, the hard part of policing, the tragic part of policing, and the part that always strikes a chord," and he said, "Not only for our officers in relation to losing a fellow officer, but for our citizens and for City Hall." So, we pray that that's something that never happens in Cottonwood, and we appreciate our fine police department and all they do to protect citizens, because as much as some folks like to complain, they really do, every day put their lives on the line for us, and we should appreciate them. I'd like to congratulate Alf Alardo as a newly appointed governing board member of Yavapai College, and Tuesday, February 25th, Vinnie's Pizza had a fundraiser for the teen center, and my husband, the guy that never shows up for anything, and I didn't, he surprised me, and he even came to the fundraiser, and it was just a lot of fun, we had lots of laughs and really enjoyed it, and Marianne Jimenez is the chair of that, and I understand that we raised about $800, is that correct?
Yes, $817.
All right, so we'd like to thank Vinnie's Pizza, they do a lot for the community, and also Ellen and Sherri Marks and Kathy Wambacher were there, and probably some others that I'm not remembering, but they do a lot also, along with Marianne, for this project, and I tell you what, for the little bit of money that this group has, they earned every cent, they have not gotten a gift of anything, they earned it through selling cupcakes, I mean, they made a lot of cupcakes for the funds they have, so if there's anyone in the community who can support the teen center, they're going to open in maybe a couple of months or less, they're just working on accommodating all the city's requests for OSHA and getting the building ready for the teen center, but they're going to be looking for volunteers, and I understand they meet the first Monday?
The fourth Monday.
The fourth Monday, right here in this council chambers, every month at 4:30 p.m. So, the fourth Monday at 4:30, if anyone in the community can help, and that's teens also, please volunteer, contact our city clerk, she's in the building right next door, and her phone number is 340-2725. Okay, so on Wednesday, the police department held its employee awards ceremony, and employee of the fourth quarter was Officer Dan Lobby, and if I don't say these right, I apologize. Rookie of the Year is Officer Cody De La Fuente, Officer of the Year is Detective Aaron Scott, Civilian of the Year was Autumn Durnes, Communication Specialist of the Year was Melanie Corset, Supervisor of the Year was Sergeant Garth Braxton, and Volunteer of the Year was Jack Van Wy. So, on February 27th, I have to explain what happened, Patty May is in our audience tonight, but we together ran a marathon all over town, didn't we Patty? Just doing activities that I do, and she was shadowing me for the Verde Valley Leadership Class, so our first event of the day was going to the Cottonwood, or to Daniel Bright's School, and we got to listen to Cottonwood Kids Can Serve, and that's a program that the City Council has approved, and it's something where we're teaching kids grades one through eight conservation, but like the Vice Mayor, those kids were so cute, and Ms. Sims was from the Natural Resource Conservation District, was their teacher, and she had a big gallon bottle in a funnel, and then she had big cups, and each child in the room got a big cup, and they went around to see how many cups they could fill with this gallon of water, and then they all brought their cups back up, there wasn't enough water for the big cups, so they all brought their cups back up, and she gave them little cups, and they were able to see that when you use less water, everybody gets water then, because they were able to fill up all the cups and have some left over, so it was really just a charming lesson in conservation, so I can see the first graders, as the Vice Mayor always says, going home to explain to their families about conservation. At noon, Patty and I ran out to Yavapai College, who was hosting the Arizona Town Hall about early childhood education, then we ran over to Yavapai Broadcasting where we taped two shows, one featuring Yavapai College and another about the Verde Valley Teen Center, and you can watch those shows on verdivallietv.com, or you can watch them on YouTube if you look for Verde Valley TV. From there, we charged off to the ribbon cutting for the Susan J. Ream Adult Services Center, where we met up with the Vice Mayor and former council member Linda Norman, and we cut ribbon for their new business. So, this adult daycare service center will be for adults with disabilities, and it will be to provide a lot of interesting things for them to do, a place for them to go if their families have to work, and so it sounds like it's going to be a great addition to our community. And at 6:00 p.m., Patty and I ended our day with the Verde Valley Intergovernmental Meeting, and then on Monday, we had lunch to debrief and talk about my goals as the mayor and other such things, so I want to thank Patty very much for hanging out with me that day, it was great to have a partner. And on Monday, March 3rd, I went to Dr. Daniel Bright's School for Dr. Seuss's birthday and a promotion to encourage reading, and I read Dr. Seuss's book called There's a Map on My Lap, because I love maps, and afterwards, we had a SciTech meeting, and I'm going to, I have a whole bunch of information here, but I'm running out of time, so I've asked staff, and Rudy's going to work on this, to put this, the SciTech Festival on our next agenda, so that the council can learn about it, and the community can learn about it, but just as an example of one of the things that's going to happen is with public safety, technology is an integral part of law enforcement and firefighting, computers and vehicles, cameras that see through even the most dense smoke, accident recreation equipment, even robots that help battle crime, so the Cottonwood Police and Fire Departments will be having all of this and more on display, as well as trained individuals detailing how it all works, so they will also be able to see their latest additions to their SWAT vehicles, that's just one of the really fantastic things that are going to be going on for a whole week in the Verde Valley, as we all work with other cities and towns, colleges and local businesses, and local education, we're all collaborating, and it's really a great thing, and again, I would thank Rudy, who has done so much work on this, and I just know, he just loves to get out of having to do numbers all the time, and he's got this really creative side that we can all be very proud of, he's done a great job, so thank you, Rudy. So, he'll be bringing more information to the council and the public at our next meeting. Okay, the next item is Presentations, and we have Cottonwood, did I miss something?
Do you want to let him give a presentation?
Oh, did I forget something? Did you find your page?
I found it.
All right, please.
I want to go, want to go over a couple, some of the things that have been going on in the city, as many of you can see, the Old Town Basketball Courts that are being refurbished, it should be done this week, wanted to note that the Suns are paying for $4,800 of the work down there, when they removed the old logos, they found that what we thought was concrete was actually a paint overlay on it, so when they got rid of the logos, we actually, there was a difference in color, so the city is going to cover $2,200 worth of repair work that needs to be done where those logos were before they put on the new logos, but that should be done sometime this week, they're expecting it to be done tomorrow, we're hoping that they are, if not, they'll be done probably by the weekend. The first general plan open house went well, they had 12 peoples in attendance, the next open house, as a reminder, is March 24th, at the Recreation Center at 5:30, again, welcome, we'd like to have council there, and of course, first and foremost, the public too, to comment on the general plan. The Utilities has ordered approximately 2,000 water bottles for the SciTech Festival, we will also be handing out t-shirts, anything that our Utilities Department does not use will be, will be given to all the other agencies that will be having events that particular week. Last Friday, the 28th, fire PD personnel attended the Cottonwood Elementary School and read Dr. Seuss stories to the children in celebration of Dr. Seuss's birthday. The Recreation Center, it will be hopefully receiving their indoor pool and spa heater, and should be installed by next Monday if everything goes well. We're currently pouring the stem walls for the new communications center this week, that's moving along rather nicely, that particular location is right behind our Public Safety Building, if anybody wants to go by and visit the site, it is fenced in though. The hockey rink should be completed by March 15th, and so right after that, they'll be looking at the skate park and see what kind of renovations we need to do over at the skate park, but for the hockey rink, they've replaced damaged fence on both facilities, and it should be done by the end of this week, the hockey rink surface will also be applied by volunteer contractors on March 15th to 16th, they will also begin reinforcing with new angle braces, braces. Terry Tassa from the Dirty Valley Roller Derby is looking for a company to donate about 2,500 bolts and washers to go ahead and hold all the paneling on that particular rink, after that, they plan to start repainting it. A portion of the concrete that's missing over at the skate park is being redesigned, and quotes are being gathered now, and hopefully the work will be completed in the next two weeks. The concrete walkway the council wanted from the skate park over to the restrooms over at Riverfront Park are also being looked at, if we can't get them done this year, we'll, we're looking at trying to get them done first, early next fiscal year. Also wanted to mention that the Rec Center is looking to extend their after-school program services to accommodate the increase in children that have come to the Rec Center due to the closure of the Boys and Girls Club, we want to make sure they have a place to go while they're closed temporarily. We had 20 offers, 20 offers, 20 people have attended the officer training at our Police Department for one position, this is probably the most we've had in some time, and some of those applicants are looking very promising. Yavapai College reclaimed water line has about 3,000 feet already laid, which is about halfway, the utility, and want to also mention that 12th Street will begin their, some of their utility work here in the near future, want to just go ahead and mention to the public to just keep their eyes open, because there'll be some changes in traffic coming soon. Lastly, Iris, our Human Resources Manager, who also handles our risk, met with an ADA specialist last week, they weren't from OSHA, they were from Tempe, they loaned us one of their people who toured the Recreation Center and outdoor pool and tennis courts, and we were real fortunate, there were very few items that were found to be non-ADA compliant, and we're looking at getting those things taken care of here shortly, that takes care of it, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, I'm glad you found your page, because that was great information.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so the next item is Presentations. We have the Cottonwood Homes for Our Troops Fundraising Committee in grateful recognition of their efforts to support the completion of Sergeant Jordan Maynard's home, and at the key ceremony, the Verde Valley was given this plaque that says what I just said, and that was on February 1st, and I just wanted to put this on the agenda tonight, I really wanted to highlight our staff members who have, who were so good about supporting this, and I know that some of them spent their own time to help out with these projects, but as I recall, and I'll ask staff to correct me if I'm incorrect, but I recall that, of course, Parks and Recreation was highly involved, and we had a fundraiser at the Rhythm and Ribs Event that brought about $4,000, I think, and that same night, Aaron's, Aaron's Rental Company in the Food City Plaza donated $1,000, so from that event, we donated $5,000, and then the Police Department... And then the Police Department had a special event for the community, and it was an all community event, but they did have opportunities for fundraising that night, and so they had, they were very supportive of it also. Our Police Department, and I guess there's no one here from the Police Department tonight, but I know that they, they did a lot for, for the cause, and Doreen Lewis from Homes For Our Troops in Massachusetts at the very last minute was like, "We don't have an escort. We don't have an escort." So I did let Doug know, the City Manager, and our Police Department, working in the regional capacity that they do and always being willing to help everyone, went out to his home in Cornville and escorted him to his home outside the city limits of Cottonwood, just outside of Cottonwood. So I think that they, you know, went above and beyond, and I'd certainly, as Mayor and on behalf of the council, like to thank them for that effort. And then we also had, oh, we had the Community Development Department, and Dan Luder did a fundraiser during a golf tournament, the Fall Classic Golf Tournament, and raised $900. So I'd like all of them to come up, to be recognized, and also I would like Milk Kruber, who is, who has been working, worked a lot on both the landscaping project and also the key ceremony. And then right now, he's working on another project that, that Jordan has said that he would like, which is a fence around his property. So this is something that our community will, you know, will have to keep doing a little bit of fundraising probably to help out with this. And also, we have Pam Van Winkle with us, if you would all come up. And Pam did the first, very first fundraiser, I think it was the spaghetti supper, and that raised $6,000. So we could have, we could have all of the council kind of stand when you all come over to support, supporting all of our staff.
Please stand.
Get here in the middle of. Wait a minute, I got a stool under here. Okay. So, so what we could do with this, okay, and it was presented to, you know, he lives in Cottonwood, and so it does say Cottonwood, but I do want to stress that this is the entire Verde Valley, everybody that helped was rescued with this plaque, depending on where you live. So I just don't know if, would you like to like take turns showing it off in your various buildings?
We'd love to. Ours for a while, and then we, I know that we also have the, so with the trophy case.
Right.
So that'd be great.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
One thing the mayor did not get the answer covered yet was that Doreen Lewis came out of Homes For Our Troops, wanted to pass through Cottonwood and the Verde Valley. When they do Homes For Our Troops, they go to local communities, and these projects are not fully funded. It's not that, you figure now, $510 million is what they need to provide a home for the troops that are still in line waiting for a home. So the local community have to pitch in, do the best they can of all the homes they built, and they now built over 150.
Milk, could you grab the microphone there?
I can.
Okay.
What do I do with my ear?
Put it closer to your mouth so the TV land can hear your information.
They will be able to.
Okay.
One thing that the Verde Valley did is about 450 homes that they built for our seriously wounded troops, Verde Valley collected more funds than any other municipality.
Than the whole United States.
Yes.
Thank you, Milk. Yeah, we collected $26,000 altogether, and we did the best of any other community in the nation of supporting Homes For Our Troops.
That's because we're awesome.
We are. And we care about those who have served and are serving also very much. All of us do. Okay, thank you all very much. The next item is call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Is there anyone, is there any member of the public who would like to speak tonight? If not, we'll close the floor to the public and go to the next item. The next item is approval of minutes. I read them, they looked fine. I would make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that was the regular meeting of February 28th to 24th. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. The consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is consent of assignment of tenant rights for Lot 116 of Cottonwood Air Park from Bacchus Investments LLC to Kent R. and Judy Bacchus. Would anybody on the council like to pull this item for discussion? Would anybody from the, from the public like to pull the item for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion. Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. I would like to just kind of switch around the items here because I know the first one's going to probably take quite a long time, so if we could run through the other two fairly quickly, if that's the council's pleasure. Okay, item number two is agreement with the Verde Valley Fair Association and Yavapai County to transfer control and responsibility over the Cottonwood, and responsibility of the Cottonwood Equestrian Center to the association. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You may remember that back in 2005, excuse me, back in 2005, the county, the city, and the fairgrounds got together and formed what's been called the Cottonwood Equestrian Center. It's been very successful. In fact, several years in a row, the Arizona Rodeo Association rewarded the arena as the bester in the state of Arizona. Great volunteers as far as getting it started. The county contributed a significant sum of money in order to get the facility built, and the city's been maintaining it ever since. A combination of several things have occurred. One, the volunteers have declined. I think as city staff was expected to start taking over, the volunteers declined slightly. Not any less enthusiasm, they just thought, hey, the void's being filled. And two things happened as a result of that. Unfortunately, our staff, their, their streets maintenance staff, they're not arena specialists, and it didn't get taken care of as well as it did when the volunteers, who are experts in the area, took care of it. It's also been a significant cost to the city. The city estimates that we spend approximately $30,000 worth of man-hours per year at that arena. Therefore, we got together, I think it's been happening for close to a year now, we've been working with the fairgrounds to say, what would it take to, for the fairgrounds to take this over? Not only could they, if they take it over, the insurance requirements from everyone who wants to come in to use the facilities would be less. The fairgrounds could use every event there as a fundraiser. Right now, they would be very limited as what, how much they can raise funds, what they can sell. And so we've been working out an agreement. The fairgrounds had some concerns, and those are spelled out in the agreement. Right now, the city has a water truck and a tractor that are not used at any other facilities except for at the fairgrounds. So staff would like to recommend we donate those facilities, I'm sorry, those two pieces of equipment to the fairgrounds as part of this agreement, as far as them taking over maintenance of the fairgrounds. There's a few other items. There were some drainage concerns the staff's been working with the fairgrounds on. In fact, quite a few of those have been taken care of or are being taken care of right now. Another concern that brought this to light was when our Risk Management Department found out we had an equestrian center. Because on paper, it didn't say we owned it, but we were responsible for maintaining it. So they were worried from a risk management point of view, any liability would very likely come back on both the fairgrounds and the city. But Risk Management felt very concerned about that, so especially since it wasn't being kept up as far as it was with the volunteers making care of it. So this agreement, as drawn before you, the Fair Board has already approved it. The County Board of Supervisors has not yet approved it. However, it's on consent agenda for their next board meeting, and we have verbal agreement from Chip Davis that he wants to see. Fairgrounds is very excited. They've already, I don't know if you've been by there recently, but it looks really nice. They've upped their volunteer hours, and so this is going to be a pretty nice facility. Upon approval, should the council approve this, upon approval, it will immediately transfer hands. However, the city will continue to pay the electricity bill until the end of this calendar year, and that's just one of the concerns, kind of letting them get their feet wet, get a little bit of, you know, one season behind them in order to raise some funds so they can start to fund themselves. So that's how the agreement's drafted right now.
Okay, great. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I read through this pretty carefully, and although it looks to be costing the city a little bit, when you consider the amount of money the city's saving, it's kind of like removing an albatross from around one's neck. This looks like a good deal to me.
And we have Mr. Charlie Crick here tonight, and I, you're on the board, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And Jerry Brown, the Chair, called me this afternoon and wasn't sure anyone who would be able to be here because he's out of town, and he wanted to say that he definitely is supporting this and appreciates the council and the city's work with it. Did you wish to say anything, Mr. Crick, or add anything to the conversation?
No, ma'am. I'd just like to thank the city and all the staff for their efforts that they've put forth so far in this agreement. It's been a long road, but we just hope that we can continue to make this facility a great asset for the city, and it'll generate revenue for the city and for the public and hotels and everything. We're already booking some pretty good events coming up, so we really appreciate if we can pass this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to share a little bit of history about this equestrian center, some, Ruben Hadigee and Karen Pfeifer, who else was on the council? I think myself. We were on the council when a group of citizens brought to council, it was back in about 2003 or '04, that they really wanted to have an equestrian center. And at the time Supervisor Davis was able to access an arena, and they wanted to put this down at where the landing is, down by where the community garden is, and I was like, oh, you know, that's just going to add a lot of activity in a very pastoral location. It has a lot of activity now anyway, but, so I was talking to a few citizens and suggested the fairgrounds at the time, and so they all worked, everybody worked together, the city and county and the fairgrounds. And so this was created, and that was how we got Hezekiah Allen. He came to work for the city for that position. Of course, then he got very, you know, I mean, there was so much more to do in the city, so he got taken away sometimes from that position. So it ended up maybe supposedly being a halftime position that he was doing. Then he got all kinds of extra things added to his schedule of duties. But through the years, we've, you know, we've had quite a few meetings on trying to keep this going. You know, it benefits all of the Verde Valley. I would, I would guess that there's probably very few horse riders within the city limits of Cottonwood, you know, so it was serving the whole Verde Valley, truly serving. And so Cottonwood worked all these years. It's been a lot of years in a regional effort to keep this, this equestrian center going. With the volunteers, as Morgan said, we used to have a lot more volunteers, we just sort of wore them out after a while, and they got fewer and fewer. I would like to mention Steve and Jenny Wrench, who are there to, they're still there today, but they spent a lot of time. And we were recognized twice as having what they call the best dirt in the state. So I was pretty proud of that, and I was, this was important. It does help the city of Cottonwood because when events are held, there's people come stay in our hotels and eat food and fill up with gas, so it's a benefit to the city. So I'm very grateful. I think the perfect managers of the, of the center, the equestrian center will be the Fair Board, and so I think this, this agreement, it's been, they've been working on it for, gosh, months now. And so I think it's a great agreement, and I think it will benefit our community and the whole Verde Valley.
One more thing, Madam Mayor, I didn't mention Jerry Brown. Jerry Brown's been instrumental in pushing this forward.
He has been, and I forgot also, which Jerry Brown has just jumped right in like Jerry Brown does with both feet, with his cowboy boots on, and, and said, "How can we make this work?" And so he definitely deserves, you know, thanks for that, and also our city manager, Doug Vartash, who had a lot of meetings and, you know, really worked with his staff on how can we alleviate these, these issues that we were all going through. So I'm really hoping that if the council passes this, I mean, I think it could be a great fund maker for, for the Fair Board, and I just hope it gets used a lot. Any other comments from council? Comments from the public on this item? Mr. Pratt?
I'll make a motion.
Please.
I move to approve the proposed agreement between the city, Yavapai County, and the Verde Valley Fair Association concerning the Cottonwood Equestrian Center.
Second.
So Mr. Pratt made the motion. Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And my last thanks go to Morgan Scott, who has put in hundreds of hours, probably while he's babysitting those two babies at home, he's been working on the equestrian center. So thank you. Okay. Item number three is the request by the Old Town Association to close North Main Street in Old Town from Penal Street to North Cactus Street and the Old Jail Parking Lot for the proposed Run For The Roses event scheduled for May 3rd, 2014. Mr. Allen?
Madam Mayor, Council, thanks for your time this evening. The Old Town Association has been gaining a lot of steam lately. They have a great board of individuals that are made up of businesses throughout the community and mostly in Old Town, and as you know, running a small business is quite a task by itself. Tonight, we have Cindy and Lindsay with the Old Town Association. They're going to kind of present the program format so that you guys can decide whether or not to close down the street for the program, so.
So we have Patty May, Cindy B., and Lindsay Higginson from the Old Town.
We've been on Patty lately.
Patty's a great community volunteer.
Patty's on the committee. Patty's our newest board member.
Congratulations.
And is part of our portion of the Run For The Roses. Thank you.
This is the first spring event. You know, of course, we have the 20th anniversary of our Chocolate Walk this last year, and we're very excited about that because the Chocolate Walk has established in the community, and we felt that it was time that we stepped up to a spring event to bring the same kind of traffic and support to the Verde Valley. So we are doing Run For The Roses, which is the Cottonwood Bootleg Derby, and we are going to be racing sawhorses. And they are going to be merchants, or merchants and other people in the community are going to adopt a sawhorse and turn it into a workable, to be pulled or pushed, not to be ridden, down the street, and that's going to be one of our events. In addition to which, this is actually on Saturday, we're going to have a fine arts fair, and in addition to that, all of, with the street being closed, the stores are going to bring their antiques out onto the sidewalk. So we won't have other vendors other than our merchants on the street. This will really benefit our people in town. In addition to which, on Friday night to kick this off, we are going to have In addition to which, on Friday night to kick this off, we are going to have the bootleg ball, bootleg derby ball, I guess. And it is going to be with Sammy Davis Jr., who may, is a local around here. Sammy Davis, not Junior. That's another guy. We're going to resurrect him. And he is going to actually play for two sets. That will be the main attraction of the evening. We have some other entertainment planned and a silent auction. A lot of this, I'll let Cindy kind of tell you a little bit about the background and where our monies are going to go in terms of contributions. So this is, this is the general overview. So there'll be a Friday night ball and then this, and then on Saturday night, which is the Kentucky Derby weekend, this will be the Cottonwood Bootleg Derby. So, any questions? I'll let, I'll let Cindy expand a little more.
Madam Mayor and City Council, thank you for your time. We're really excited about this event and bringing it to the Verde Valley. It is going to be our first annual spring and we're hoping to have it be annual every year and draw a lot of tourism. Lindsay has actually put together a beautiful ad that will be featured in the Phoenix Magazine. And if anyone hasn't seen this ad, pass it around, it's really nice. It's about the historical town Cottonwood and, and the different events that we're going to be having here. So featuring Run for the Roses is going to be in it. And that's supposed to happen?
That will actually be dropping in two weeks. The Cuisine of Arizona, which is a year-round magazine, this will go in that as well. It has a list of all our events, city and OTA, in there.
So we're hoping to bring quite a crowd up from Phoenix and Scottsdale and Apache Junction and Maricopa Counties. So I think it definitely will do that. On our Friday evening event, which is the Bootleggers Ball, we have, wonderfully, I'm very excited about this, have taken a charity organization in Cornville called Connections. And Connections is a horse therapy organization that is based just strictly on donation and it helps the mentally handicapped. And we are really excited to put together the silent auction at the Bootleggers Ball to benefit them. And so that, that is our main goal for the Bootleggers Ball. Also then, on the next day, our Kentucky Derby style, we have the horseshoe tournament, the art fair, and the horse race, which we think will generate and bring quite a few people down just to see these horses run. The merchants are very excited. We only have room for about 42 horses and we have 21 now that are committed. And so they're very excited about building their horses and pulling them down the street. So we're looking forward to that. And if there's any questions or anything else we can answer, do you want to talk about the art fair a little bit?
Yeah.
For our art fair, we are inviting artists.
If you want to get over closer to the microphone there, so the public can hear you.
We'll turn this one down. So the art fair, for this, this year's art fair, we're inviting artists. We hope to have 30 artists and vintage antique dealers in the Old Town Jail parking lot area. And we are inviting people to present fine arts, and crafts, ceramics, jewelry, and watercolor and oil paintings. And we've gotten a lot of interest already. We just started recruiting artists last week and I've got several artists who've been committed to attend and be a part of the art fair. So we're trying to up that ante a little bit and make it very special in that we're really inviting people that we feel would bring a lot of positives to the Verde Valley art fairs.
Okay. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I actually talked to a few merchants today who are really excited about this, anything that brings people to town. And it occurred to me, this also kind of fits in with our branding as not just a wine tasting center, but also an event center. It's just another event that's going to bring people to town. Obviously, when you bring people to town, they spend money and it's good for the city. So it's just another cool thing going on in Cottonwood, I think. And somebody said, a sawhorse race, that's cool. And very unique, yeah. So I'm excited about it and I think a lot of people are.
We're hoping there'll be a horse from the city.
We could do that.
So on your poster, you have a real horse. Are you planning to have one hitched up down here somewhere?
Well, this is actually a sawhorse in the, in the little.
Oh, that big, the big horse?
Oh, there is a real horse, yes. But down in our logo, that's from Patty.
That big horse.
Drop that little. That's our sawhorse. That's Patty's. That's our new logo.
That one?
Yes, no, that's a real horse.
Okay. You never know about these artists, they're pretty good sometimes.
Well, we're using the sawhorse down below as our logo for this.
This one right here.
Right. The other thing is, we're trying to list, and with Hez's help through Parks and Recs, we've actually taken to listing all of the events that will be here in town, you know, up until the end of the year.
Great.
So that gives them a real feeling that we mentioned it will be offered.
Right. We put, all put that on our emails and, yeah, this is the year's activities. So I do see here that, that the Old Town Association will work with and pay a traffic control company to provide detour signs, road closed signs, personnel, and a traffic control plan, subject to the approval and modification of the city's Public Works Department. And I think that was one issue. Every time we closed down the street, it cost us a couple of thousand dollars at least. And so that is why staff wanted to bring it, you know, to the council. And then, of course, this is an avenue now that the public has, they're able to speak on this issue if they wish. So we can take public input.
At this time?
At this time, you know, to see whether there's anyone who disagrees with it or everybody has a chance then to comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so I would ask members of the public that are here, if you'd like to comment on this item? If you're for it or against it or whichever? All right. So, any, any other comments? Mr. Hez?
I'd also like to mention to the council that the Old Town Association did visit businesses and residents throughout Old Town to invite them to this council meeting if there was any issues on this topic.
So you did get the word out?
Yes.
About this meeting? Okay, so if they cared one way or the other, they had an opportunity to make a difference?
Yep.
Okay. So council, any questions, comments, further?
I guess the only, I'm really excited about the event, obviously. And I, I just think that the traffic on Cactus Street can, can be kind of difficult at times when they close Main Street. So it's getting worse and worse, not because of events going on, but because people are now using cactus as sort of a detour to get around Main Street when traffic moves slowly. So I would just ask that we're just a little more sensitive to that with this event because people do tend to fly down that street and there's families that live along there and that kind of thing.
And babies.
And babies. Maybe we could temporarily post.
And small children.
15 mile an hour speed limit or something and try to keep that monitored or something because it, it can be dangerous at times. A lot of pedestrian traffic now too, going to botch and the new restaurants down there, you know, from the new parking lot, then they walk down, there's no sidewalks. So it's, it can be hazardous at times, I've witnessed to.
And that's a great point. And Thunder Valley Rally was one of those times where we had issues with that as well. And Public Works Department stepped up and handled it greatly by assisting us with the traffic control plan. And that's what the Old Town Association's going to submit to the Public Works Department, get their review, and then contract out to a traffic control company to assist with the actual road closure. So it's not a burden on the city.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion. Mr. Pratt?
I'll move to approve the closure of Main Street from Penal Street to North Cactus, along with the Old Town Jail parking lot on May 3rd, 2014, from 4:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Second. Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all for your hard work. I know you're spending lots of hours on this project, so we appreciate you. Okay, moving on to the next item. Is proposed sale of the Old Recreation Center building located at 791 North Main Street. Mr. Horton?
Madam Mayor.
And Mr. Rodriguez. Are you tag teaming on this?
Steve will go ahead and handle it, most of it.
Doug's name was down here, so I didn't know if you had, we're going to both share information or however.
We'll see.
Please lead the way.
Madam Mayor and council, just, just by way of background, we've, we've discussed this matter several times, but at council direction, last fall, the city issued an RFP soliciting interest from parties that, that would want to acquire the Old Rec Center property and redevelop it in a way that, and, and we didn't put any restrictions on what it might be redeveloped into, other than the underlying entitlements for, for the zone. And knowing that it also lay within a designated historic district. I, I think the thinking behind that was, we were looking to see what people might propose to enhance, complement what's currently down here. And it was very important to the council that the historical integrity, such as it remains, would, would be preserved and, and respected. And there's been some discussion, the, the building's been used for various things over the years, but there was certainly a universal sentiment that the, the history that the building evokes be preserved and, and respected. So the, the RFP was developed and then issued, I think it was posted on the city's website, it was advertised in the paper. And there was considerable amount of interest. 10 RFPs were pulled, the packets that described what the city was looking for and what the city would entertain by way of proposals. In the end, however, only, only one proposal was received. And that was from the, the three gentlemen sitting over here in the, in the front row, who proposed to redevelop that property into a brew pub. And we have had a number of discussions back and forth. There's been direction from the council, there's been proposals by these gentlemen. And I can go over the, the major transaction points that, that have been developed and are before you tonight for your consideration, discussion, and, and comment from the public before your decision. The, the purchase price would be $150,000. I think it, it bears mentioning that there was an appraisal obtained before the RFP issued for the parcel of property on which the building sits. And that appraisal was for $224,000. At the council's direction, however, and, and the RFP included this, the city's intent was to resurvey that parcel so that the city would retain certain land and for the purpose of developing that into public parking, not parking just devoted to that specific property. So the, the recalculated appraised fair market value of the property was $150,000. So right now, the, the proposal would be to purchase the building and, and a very little bit of property around it for $150,000, as long as $50,000 of that at least was allocated to improve the parking that's being, or the parking on the, the lot that's being retained. We have negotiated deed, certain deed restrictions that would go actually run with the property and be recorded with the deed. The property could not be sold or conveyed to any other party, other than to whom it, it would be going, without the city council's approval. And that's to ensure that, that the property doesn't get sold pursuant to an understanding that it will be one thing and then, and then wind up being another. And that would run for, I think I mentioned, three years. A second deed restriction that, that we thought to include, because we thought maybe the, the council would think that this particular permitted use might not be consistent with what the council intends for Old Town, is that the property may not be used as a medical marijuana dispensary unless and until it is no longer a violation of federal law, because even though it is authorized under state law to dispense marijuana, medical marijuana under license from DHS, it is still a violation of federal law to do so. Finally, with respect to preserving the, the historical integrity of the property, the, the proposers would submit to review and comment by the State Historic Preservation Office and the City's Historic Preservation Commission. Further, they would be required, part of their business plan involves producing beer for off-site sales. And for that, under the underlying zoning, they would need a conditional use permit. That has to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So they, in the first place, would have to submit themselves to that permitting process. Any design proposals would also be subject to the design review process of the zoning ordinance. That again requires Planning and Zoning Commission approval. Finally, the, any design of the exterior of the property would be subject to city council's final approval. And, and those are the points that we've negotiated. Those are contained in the, in the draft agreement before you. As you'll see, there's still some details to be filled in. But I believe, I think staff believes that their, the, the material points are fleshed out enough for you to be able to, to consider and, and offer your considered decision on this tonight.
Questions, council? Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, again, I looked into this one a lot. I've read the business plan and I did one of the pros and cons. And the, I'll say the con first because it's, there's more pros, was you kind of hate to see the city sell a building. However, to my mind, the pros far away the cons. This is a building that we really haven't kept up over the years and is in dire need of much renovation. And the business group that is offering to buy this is willing to do that renovation. And I hate to see a building just deteriorate. I think it's kind of one of the types of things that's been missing in Old Town. I've had people talking to me about a brewery. I think their business plan is excellent. I think they've negotiated in very good faith with us and we had some stipulations and asked them to come back and consider those, and they did. So to me, and, and again, it's going to benefit the city economically. And I did get some, a couple of emails and people said, another place to serve alcohol, drunks all over the place. Well, microbreweries are not the type of place that people go to consume large, large amounts of beer. They go for the quality of the beer, not the quantity. So again, the pros are far away the cons to me and I really support this and I think it's a great idea for Old Town.
Mr. Elinsky?
I'm excited about the proposal as well. I, I think that it's good for us to get, for the city to relinquish that building to the, to the private sector because I don't think we've done a good job maintaining it. And I'm excited to see that a historic building will get restored well, as it should. And I'm glad that we'll be overseeing that to make sure that it's, you know, suits the character of Old Town. And the other thing is, I'm glad that we're getting market value for the property. It was praised for 150 and we're getting 154 and that is important to me. And I, I think as, you know, they've also negotiated with us very well and I'm excited for their business plan. I'm excited to see that happen in Old Town. I think it's something that Old Town will benefit from, not just their business, but other businesses in the area.
Mr. Haddig?
I just have a question. Has anybody figured out what it's going to cost to do this public parking lot total?
There's preliminary numbers we've looked at recently, that the parking lot to do will be about $217,000 was the last estimate we looked at. So this, this would be, that would make it a little bit easier for us to fund.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor? I was impressed. One of the gentlemen, I don't know which one of you, were called and, and they weren't trying to find out or tell me what they wanted to do with the building. They wanted to find out what my options would be and what I wanted to see the building look like. And instead of trying to convince me otherwise, they, they wanted information on how I felt about it and what I wanted to see, which is a real change from a lot of the other phone calls I'm sure that we get. So I did appreciate that phone call. Thank you. Any other comments? A big piece that was important to me because of some citizen comments was the appraisal. And so I, I did research, you know, how that was done. The appraisal was done, we couldn't use his name, right? It's not, and the appraisal is available to the public?
Yes, ma'am.
The appraisal, appraisal is available to the public. It was done by Joe Bach, who has appraised many buildings for us. And some of us were surprised actually that it appraised so high because it is in really bad condi- really bad condition. So, I think that most people feel that it was a fair appraisal. You know, some don't. He is, he's specialized in commercial appraisals, so it's not the first appraisal that he's ever done. He's done many others. Okay, and then, another concern about some members of the public, that I wanted to ensure that we got answers to, was, you know, how did we advertise this? And we advertised it the same way, as from what I researched, that we do other projects of the same kind. So, we put it on our website, we advertised it in the newspaper, enough people found out about it that ten people pulled packets. That's pretty good, really. But after looking at the building, and it's really bad condition, and the amount of money it's going to cost, because this is just a small piece of the, more than a million dollars, that they will have to put into it, to make sure that people don't fall through the floor when they go in there. Because we had to close it down many years ago, we couldn't have dances, or people couldn't exercise on it anymore, we had to close it down. That was really a sad day for me. But we haven't, you know, been able to, because we have so many other things building, the rec center, it's not like we haven't been doing anything. But there's only so much money to go around, and we haven't been able to maintain this building, as, you know, every one of us and the community wishes that we could. We wish that we had unlimited dollars to make every building perfect, but we don't. So, those were two issues that some members of the public were concerned about. And I feel, after questioning and seeking answers, I do feel that the city acted appropriately, and the city was transparent in this process. So, now we'll take time out for members, oh, well, duh, the most important part here is, the proposed purchasers, Robert Conlin and Suheiko Ono and Richard, or Julian Rubel, are here tonight. So, we're going to give the public all time to talk about this and give their comments, but I'd like you gentlemen to come up and share any information that you would like. I know that you did it in a prior meeting, but we may have some people in our television audience that didn't get to hear you, so if you'd just come up and introduce yourselves again, for the members of the public. Council's already heard this, but not everyone from the public has.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor. Council. Appreciate the opportunity again, and really the process. So, introduction, I live in Sedona, I've been in the Verde Valley for 18 years. My wife and my son are here, my daughter is not. So, an opportunity for them to see what we're doing every day, and what the possibilities are. So, again, I'll just express my excitement personally for what's happening in Old Town, what's happening in the Verde Valley, and how excited I am to be a part of that, from a whole new domain, effectively, and, again, the roses events, the chocolate events, and to participate in that. So, for me, as I introduced myself last time, it's really about growing within this community, and having an opportunity for my family to grow into that, in a really exciting way. So, that's my introduction, and appreciate the time, again, to present ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conlin?
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for your time and consideration tonight. Again, my name's Robert Conlin. Most people know me by Bobby. I have Bobby D's BBQ up in Jerome. Been there for about three years, and I've lived in the Verde Valley since I was five. This is my home, and I'll probably always live here. I love it. So, I'm very excited to be a part of the regrowth and revitalization of Old Town. And, you know, we're really excited to get rolling on this project. We have a great team and a great concept, and I think it's going to be a win-win for the community and everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ono?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. And again, thank you for taking considerable amount of time on this. We are very excited, I want to reiterate that I am extremely excited. I'm the newest of the group to the Verde Valley, I've been here five years. Moved out here from New York and fell in love with it. I was actually out here for three months, so it definitely appealed to me. And I am doing my very best to make this my home, sink roots into it, and do some interesting things. You know, I really, I like, there's a lot of interesting things going on. The Verde Valley Ag Coalition is, I think, having some interesting discussions, and so there's a lot of opportunity for what we want to do, to tie into a lot of things that are already going on. So, I won't take any more time. Again, thank you very much, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, so just to go over a little bit, as I was reading through the packet, to just share some information with the public, who may not have read all of this, but this, all of the information is available online. Everything that the council has, that we're looking at tonight, is available at www.cottonwoodaz.gov. So, what we have here is available to you. So, just, one thing that I wanted to bring up was their mission statement. And their mission statement says, "Our food and our beer are made for those who care about the food they eat, the beer they drink, and what goes into making it. In our lives, we emulate the classical American steward of the land, who endeavors to life, liberty, and happiness through independence, resourcefulness, self-reliance, personal responsibility, hard work, and creativity. Our beer and food are made with great care from the finest and most local ingredients possible, and we hope it is a sensuous and rich connection to the local land and the people in it. We consider it an honor to participate in these timeless and sacred crafts, and we consider it our civic duty to do them well." I was just impressed, and as I read through the plan, the proposal, that all the thought that these individuals have actually put into their business plan. They talk about, I mean, even though, after they do sink about a million more, a million or more dollars into this building, to bring it up to City's codes and make it into a nice building, very often, as I was reading, it can take a year or two before there are any, even any profits promised. So, they really have a long-term commitment to this project. It talks in the proposal, and the public can get in, online and read that. It talks about the building, and one thing that the council was very concerned about, and I don't like to speak for Mr. Garrison, but he wasn't able to be here yet, and may miss the conversation, but that was, and with Mr. Ilinski, who's on the Cottonwood Economic Historical Commission, is that hysterical? Oh, hysterical.
Close to hysterical. We're getting there.
So, there were a lot of council members, Mr. Howdig, all of us, all of us were concerned about how the building would retain its historical value. And so, staff, and we directed staff, and staff went out and worked with them, and came back with, really, they're very much concerned about the historical value. And there'll be different, it'll go through different processes if it is passed, where it'll go to planning and zoning, and the historical commission, and to the council. So, there's just going to be a lot of steps. And, you know, you have to admit, if this were a private deal between two private owners, they would not be having to go through all of this. They're going through a lot. And it's, I mean, it's just more difficult, when you're working with the city, when you're working with property that's owned by the public. And so, I commend you that you've been able to tolerate it. I know it's been difficult, because we're really fussy about that building and what it's going to look like. We've even asked you, we don't want it to be flipped. That was a concern of the council, you'd buy it and sell it to somebody and make money, we didn't want that. So, you've committed not to do that. So, I really think that, working with our staff, that the council gave direction to, that we have come up with a good plan. The Mother Road, you think about, that's the brewing company that you'll be working with, up in Flagstaff, and I guess the Mother Road, is that Highway 89A? Is that, I don't know, Highway 66 is the Mother Road? Okay, Route 66. But Highway 89A goes through both, beside, Route 66, that business is probably not even named for Route 66. But, still, the Mother Road, I just, I like to think of, we're connected by 89A, our communities. So, just some other things, as you both, you all have families here, and your families here, so you, you know, you have a commitment to the Verde Valley and to Cottonwood. Going through the financial information, you really just have thought, you've thought about it a lot, and so. Anyway, I would like to invite members of the public, if you would like to comment on this plan. And I know that Joan met with me out in the public, and I invited her to come and speak tonight.
I've been a member of this community, actually, not cottonwood, but only by the block.
And so, Rudy's going to, Rudy's going to help you with the microphone there.
I've been a member of the community for 32 years, and I'd like to see the changes that have happened in Old Town. And for the most part, they've been real positive changes. And over those years, I started as walking, when I first came here. And when the tavern, the old movie house burned down, I actually watched it with my little sister, with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We had gone there, and I was, and I was like, "Oh, I wonder what they're going to do," because now, hopefully, they'll make it accessible. It was a time when I was transitioning to more working in a wheelchair. So, now that I'm in a wheelchair, I try to attend events in Old Town, and for the most part, they've been accessible. Once in a while, there's a minor exception. Mr. Pratt has helped me out with one of those, and gave me a suggestion, with the bandstand in the corner. My concern with the building was, from the architectural drawing, I couldn't tell if there was any handicap access at all for wheelchairs, number one. And then, it was kind of a side thought, because I was picturing the old theater, and with the disasters in Katrina, and New York especially, I have a mobility, new mobility magazine, that's a disability magazine, and they were addressing getting out emergencies. So, then I was asked, thinking, "Well, one elevator isn't going to do it, and would there be a backup plan for evacuation in case of a fire or emergency within that building?" And it wasn't, it wasn't obvious to me on the architectural plan. And now that I hear the city is talking about parking, and the parking lot change, I would be real interested to know where accessible parking might be, since it's a very difficult street area to cross in Cottonwood. It's busy, there's a curve.
Absolutely.
And so, I wondered if anyone could address those.
And that would probably take a team of city members, and I don't know if we've discussed that yet, for this project, but we have to comply with ADA?
We have to comply with all ADA requirements. The initial drawings that we saw in the parking lot will have some handicap, accessible parking lot, parking spots over by the current civic center. Right now, it doesn't look like we have any accessibility, because the pavement is real bad.
Very difficult, yeah.
But all that has already been looked at, and before it even, before we would start breaking ground in the parking lot, we will be coming to council, and we will comply with all ADA requirements. So, for our end, we will have a handicap accessibility.
What about the balcony?
So, if you want to come up to the microphone?
You know, that's an issue that we've also given a lot of thought to, given the unique structure of the building, with the two-story structure. I'm not an expert on it, I've dealt a bit with ADA requirements and regulations on my property in Jerome, but I have discussed that at length with a couple of different architects that we've been consulting with. So, we have some ideas, and our plan is to make sure that we execute them to where there won't be any safety concerns regarding ingress and egress of both floors. The bottom floor shouldn't be an issue at all, as it basically is on a smooth plain with the outdoor area. And then, we can see possibly an interior elevator, and then some sort of, maybe a lift, or something along those lines, at the main entrance to the upstairs portion of the structure. So, that's definitely something that we have taken into consideration.
It's a building that, 32 years I've been here, I've never been in. You know, at the time I was walking, it wasn't that it was steady enough to even walk up those steps, so I know I'm not going to be walking up from there anymore.
I know, and this-
I know the Grand Canyon, Northland, has some outside, and I could see that, you know, that might be possible, people to talk to, your architect.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And Joan, your last name again?
Gray.
Gray, okay, for the record. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else want to speak? And do I have any?
I didn't find a card at there, so, sorry about that.
Okay, that's all right.
Tom Pender, 300, he's chairing Cottonwood here. I spoke previously about this, and I'm still not opposed to the brewery or anything along that line, but I think that what I would ask the council to do is, make sure that the town is getting the best dollar for their, this building. And I would, I would ask, and you've got time to do it, to maybe revisit with the appraiser, and explain to them the parking that's going to be developed by the council, and have them to reevaluate their appraisal. I think it's going to come back, I think it's going to shock you. Because when, when that part of the equation is put in there, I think that there's a lot more value there. And it may not have been presented as clearly as it is now, when you sent out the requests for proposals. So, I think that, at the end of the day, the community, I'm just looking at this for the community's sake, the community could probably get more value out of that building because of what we've already committed to do, and build the parking lot. The use, I think it's a great use. Maybe if we come back with an appraisal, and they're still happy with the number and all that, since they're talking about putting a million dollars into the project, then maybe we just move forward, and everybody's happy at that point. My feeling is that, though, I'm hearing that they're going to be putting a million dollars worth of investment in the building, that wasn't my understanding previously. My understanding previously, they were going to put a half a million dollars in the building, and a half a million dollars in equipment in the building. Have they now changed their plan?
That's, I'm just talking about-
The building hasn't changed.
Okay, so it's just a half a million dollars into the building. That's, that's a considerable amount of money. I don't disagree with that. But I think that, at the end of the day, I would revisit the appraisal, to make sure that the community's getting what it bought off to do. I think that, you know, there was just one, one group, maybe at that point in time, it should have been reconsidered to put it out to auction. And you can put Cottonwood's on anything that you sell, as a community. Whatever you want that to be, you can sell it as that. And maybe it would come in at this, or higher, or lower, I don't know. I just, I'm just, you're in a tough position, the staff has been in a tough position, because they're trying to hit a curve ball here, that has no means or direction. And I think that we've done a good job, you know, the community's done a good job to get to this point. I'm just, you know, I'm a neighbor, I invested in this community when there wasn't anything going on. I mean, Ruben walked out of his place down there, when I opened up shop down there, and looked at me, and kind of shook his head, like, "Are you sure?" And, you know, I've been committed here. I think a brewery is a great thing, not opposed to that. I think they'll have success. I know Bobby, I've known him for a long time, he's got a lot of energy, and it's going to take a lot of energy. So, with that, I would just like you to maybe reconsider, send it back to the appraiser, and see if they have a different opinion. If they don't have a different opinion, then you can tell me to be quiet. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I, may I comment? You're asking us to take it back to the appraiser, just because of the parking lot, because parking lot, parking lot has not been committed to yet. Okay, all those drawings are preliminary, we have not even, this is the first time we've even mentioned to the parking lot at this point in time. You know, we still have budgetary constraints. Are we going to make every effort to get it done? Yes, we are. Are we going to take the 50,000 that they've asked us to put into it, when we do build that parking lot? It will be done. I don't think it's necessary to take it back out, because we haven't made a commitment for that parking lot. And when the RFP was first put out, it was, had nothing to do with the parking, it had to do with the structure itself.
Also, on the parking, I would just remind everyone that this parking lot is for city government, it's for people shopping downtown, it's for their business, they'll be using it at night. I don't, what, I didn't remember reading your hours, are you going to be open all day and all night, both? Are you gonna be open all day and all night, both?
Lunch and dinner.
Lunch and dinner. I mean, it's going to, it's not just for them.
I appreciate that and I'm, I'm not disputing that, but something that just came up is, is very interesting to me. So you're gonna allow them to open up a business without an improved parking lot?
That's, that's not, that's not what I said. I just said that when it was originally bid out, you don't believe that the parking lot was the intent.
Okay, but the parking lot has surfaced in-
Parking lot has been planned for several years, but it has not come to fruition just yet.
Okay, but it has, it is a key element to the overall development of that property, is the parking lot. And I think it is, it is of value to the property. And I think that it needs to be, that needs to be vetted out completely before the city, you know, sell it for five dollars and, and then you find out after two years that, oh gosh, we'd already committed to doing this. The community committed to building the parking lot about ten years ago, to building it, okay?
And we haven't gotten one yet, yes.
And so, the, the bottom line is, I think that is part of the overall equation here. And if the city can, if the community, the city, being the community, could benefit by just having the appraiser look at that and say, hey, if you added the parking lot, it's gonna make this increase in value or it doesn't matter at all. I don't think that that's an extreme thing to ask for, especially in this situation.
Certainly, I think that the parking lot's gonna raise the value of all the properties around that area, including yours.
Well, no doubt. I mean, that's, that's been the situation, you know. But the, the bottom line is, is that what the, is, are we, did he look at it with that in mind? I don't think so. So I think that there, that needs to be part of the, the overall assessment, you know, because I, you know, I heard some more information tonight and all that. I just want the community to get the best deal, okay? I don't want to take advantage of them, but I don't want the, the community to be taken advantage of either. So I just ask that. I appreciate the amount of work that's gone into it. You know, I know there's been a lot of people talking about this and a lot of things. Mayor, you and I have talked about it a couple times. And, and I've gained appreciation for where you're at and what you've done. And I appreciate that. I just think that there's more that we can do here and look at this to make sure that it in fact does account for everything that's been talked about and agreed to. Certainly, I understand that, that you're not committing to building this parking lot tomorrow, but that has been a commitment in the past and there's been quite a bit of resources put, put towards those commitments. And I, I don't think that the council's gonna change their, their direction on that. I've seen, you know, positive steps on that, so anyhow. With that, that's, that's my opinion. I look forward to it working out and everybody being happy. Right now, I think that there's just a little bit more information that needs to be taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We appreciate your comments.
May I, may I?
Yes.
I just would like to ask Rudy, as far as the timeframe for building this parking lot that hasn't been determined yet, I mean, what direction are we going?
Right now, that's not, that's not my call. That's something that, that the city manager has to look at and make a decision. Will it come into this upcoming year budget? I don't know.
No, but I would correct you, it's the council that will make the decision.
Oh, I mean, yeah, well, I guess, I'm asking that, he'll make the decision when he's ready to put it in before council, let's put it that way. Council made the decision, is it, will it be up this coming budget? That's not my call. We're right now putting it together, a capital plan for the second coming year.
Yeah, well, that's my concern too, is, is where, where the funds are gonna come out of to do this at this time. Because I know in the past, when we've had special requests come in for funding from the city, you've been pretty adamant that, you know, we're riding a fine line here. And, and at this point, taking out the fifty thousand, there's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars roughly estimated that this thing is gonna cost. And my concern was, is did we have a timeline? And we don't. And where is this money that the public's gonna put into this parking lot coming from?
Again, that, that'll be a budgetary decision we'll have to do when we put all of our monies together, find out where, where we can, can out fund and what we can move forward with.
Okay. And I think, and let me mention this right now. I think the only other thing that bothered me when I read this was, and it's fine and dandy to have the hundred and fifty thousand dollar for the property, because I, I think it's worth it. But I think what bothered me is, it says, as long as the city commits at least fifty thousand dollars toward establishing public parking parcel. And considering this is the people's building, the community's building, it's the community's money, I, it kind of bothered me that we're getting direction where to spend the, the public's money, you know. I, and, and maybe it's just the way this is written out. Maybe if this had come back with, we'll give you a hundred thousand dollars and we will donate fifty thousand or maybe even a hundred thousand towards this parking lot, I'd felt better about it. But that one little sentence there kind of just stuck on me.
And Madam Mayor, to Councilman Hadig's point, I think the proposers offered to, to structure it that way. I, I balked at that because it's really, if it's bargained for by definition, it's not a gift. And I think they proposed to make it a donation, but if it's a donation, that's part of the exchange of promises between parties, it's part of the contract, so it's part of the purchase price. So it's probably more a matter of semantics.
Well, I understand. Like I said, when I, when I read it, that's, that kind of stuck me here because I do feel sometimes the, the council gets left out of these decisions and, and there's a tendency to bypass the council on some of these things. And that is my concern, you know, that, that the council remain control, in control of these things, you know. So thank you.
Yes, sir? Yes, please.
Just about that. Definitely, we would never suppose, tell the council or the city what to do is, our intention was that, we discussed that. Frankly, it's not our decision. That was something that came out of the conversation after Mr. Pender's concerns about the parking and that we wanted to kind of put that out there as, as public good, of a will. Yes, we would benefit from it, but really it was, intention was, I would say, of pure intent. And that's what I, just to address that. Because I saw that wording and I thought, someone's not gonna like that. But we had discussed why that, we would propose it that way. So I take responsibility for that, but that's our intention of what you're hearing from.
Well, like I said, I just wanted to bring that up and, and I'll, I'll join the chorus of saying that this is probably a, a good project. We just want to make sure the public gets the best bang for their buck, you know? And, and that is our responsibility.
Absolutely.
Make sure they make out. Because it's, it's not ours, it's not our building, it's not the city manager's building.
Sure.
It's the public's building. So this is what we're here for.
And I could remember this incorrectly, but I think it actually appraised for one forty-nine.
Yeah, what's a thousand dollars between friends, right?
So technically, we're paying more than the appraised value.
And, and that's a good thing. I don't see a problem in that.
I would just, you know, I would like to bring up, and then Mr. Pratt will be next, but I would like to bring up the fact that for all intents and purposes, this parking lot should have been already done. And it should have been available because we, as a council, for those of us who have been on a while, approved the, the paving of that parking lot many years ago. We just, because we're talking about a new city hall, we've been in that discussion for many years. And so we, we put it off, but for all intents and purposes, it would be paved. We've already approved it years ago. And that was for the benefit of the citizens.
Well, there's a lot of things that have been proved-
That we didn't get done.
Haven't been done and bypassed and forgotten and, and so on and so forth.
I haven't forgotten that parking lot, though.
And let me tell you something, whether they park on a blacktop or, or dirt, it's not gonna make any difference. People are gonna go there, they're gonna go there.
Right.
So I, you know, it's-
Staff, do you want to cover a little bit? There's some zoning ordinance that, as I understand it, was maybe changed in the not-too-distant past, but there's an issue of, because some landowners have been, you know, concerned that they had to put in a parking lot, but other landowners didn't.
Can I mention that, address that?
Oh, is, oh, I'm sorry.
Because I, I remember that, I remember that. First of all, yes, I, I've been disappointed that parking lot hasn't been paved because it was talked about. Second of all, it's important to remember that parking lot's gonna benefit everyone in Old Town. Third of all, it's important to remember that's the city's parking lot. Yes, it was after, shortly after, we went to a League of Cities and Towns event, maybe my first year on the council. And we visited with the city manager of Bisbee and they had relaxed the parking regulations because of geography. And we talked about it and that's why we relaxed the parking regulations because of geography. You cannot expect a business, when they're, we're landlocked here, to create parking. So that's when we passed that. I was on the council very early then.
Since you've been on.
Yeah, but it was, the impetus for that was the discussion we had with people from Bisbee.
So it goes, as I understand, from bridge to bridge? Is that correct?
I believe so.
Yes.
Okay. So if you're outside of that bridge, it seems to be a different rule than if you're inside of the bridge. Mr. Pender?
You hit on something that is really interesting to me. Why did we decide bridge to bridge?
I don't recall.
I think it would be interesting to find out. I think they were talking about the old, Old Town Cottonwood, what, who'd be considered Old Town Cottonwood. Well, I've been here a long time. Councilman Garrison and I both ran around here in the streets when we were kids.
When you were teeny tiny.
Yeah. If, if we're talking about cottonwood proper, what was cottonwood? The boundaries would go a lot further to the south and probably quite a bit further to, to the northwest than what is there. I think it was just kind of an arbitrary decision that's, that's become a real problem for people. You know, it, the, the same conditions happen on the other side of the bridge as happened on this side of the bridge. And so I think that that really needs to be vetted out too.
We could-
Where is, where is the boundary? I can tell you where Clementsaw used to be. I can tell you where some, we used to consider Smelter City. I can, I can draw it on a map for you. And I'm sure there's some counselors here that could do that too. And everything else was cottonwood. So are we gonna say just, just this small portion of cottonwood? Are we gonna say, what was cottonwood proper? Are we gonna say all of the community? I think, you know, it's, it's one of those, it's a tough situation to be in.
Right.
And I know you were trying to do the right thing to begin with, but it's, now it's kind of one of these where, what is the right thing?
Exactly. But I'm not sure that I think that this particular case, that we have to solve that before we decide this, one way or the other.
I saw an opportunity to talk about that.
But I do agree that it would be something that we should talk about and, and reassess.
It might be worthwhile. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Scanlon, Pat Scanlon?
Madam Mayor, council, everyone else, everyone in TV land. I'm excited about this deal, but for different reasons than everyone else. In plain English, I think you're selling it too cheap. I don't think that it's in as bad a shape as everyone is saying it is. And I think that it's gonna take a lot more than five hundred thousand dollars to bring this thing up to speed. The other thing is, is that it sounded, and I don't know if I was hearing what I was hearing or maybe I wasn't, but Ruben asked about it. Tom Pender's talking about it. I think it's a great deal to make an offer to the community, to the council or anyone for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as long as you promise to spend fifty thousand dollars of that improving the value of my property. I think, and I'm not an appraiser and I'm not taking issue with the guy's appraisal, but please remember that the collapse of two thousand eight was based on appraisals that ended up being half of what they were really worth. And so I think I pretty much told you what I think of appraisals. It's worth what you can get for it. I think you can get more for it. I think it's gonna take more than five hundred thousand dollars to bring that two-story building up to speed. And in the same breath, I want to say that I don't think that it is in near as bad a shape as it's being portrayed. Because I think that land is worth more than a hundred thousand dollars, which is basically what the city is supposedly gonna take from it, if there's no building there. Because times are changing. Things have moved along in Cottonwood, whether the government's involved or not. It was bound to happen unless, unless everything I learned is not valid. And I've been fixing up old buildings for a long time. If it's there and you fix it up, people are gonna come and use it if you've got a good thing. And so I agree with what Ruben said about, if you got a good thing going, that parking lot is just fine with rock on it. We can, we can spend two hundred thousand dollars and put asphalt on there, but it's not gonna park any more cars. It will raise the property of people's value, of value of people's property, though. And so I think pea gravel is a good, good idea. It's cheaper and it's about the same difference and it hasn't had as bad a runoff, I don't think. But as far as the, as far as the value of the thing in the appraisal, I agree with what Tom Pender said, except the devil is in the details, you know? It's like, far be it from me, if I was selling a piece of property to somebody, and that's why I think you guys have a tough spot. If I sell it to them and say, okay, I'll sell it to you for a hundred thousand dollars, but you have to prove to me that you have enough money in the bank to do what you say you're gonna do to this junky old piece of property I'm selling to you. Well, I wouldn't sell it to anybody. And I agree that everything was transparent enough. I agree that, but I also want to say that I don't think anybody who's out beating the bushes trying to find somebody to come up with the dough to buy that thing, because so many people didn't know about it. Probably because they don't pay attention, like me, until it's easier to criticize after the fact. Well, I'm sorry, I think that building is worth probably as much as three times more than that. And if you're gonna improve the parking lot to boot, it's not gonna be worth that. But you can't appraise things based on what you haven't done yet, you gotta appraise them based on right now. The other thing is, is by decreasing it to only the footprint of the building, for the person buying the building, you increase their property taxes exponentially. And so if the town's gonna maintain a free parking lot and, and put that in or just draw lines on what's there, that's much better. Because if I was buying it, I wouldn't want to own the parking lot. You own the parking lot and you pay the taxes on it instead of me and I'll use it. Which is not to say that I don't have anything against a brewery. But if they're tied in with a brewery out of Flagstaff, where's that brewery at tonight that's gonna provide the expertise to run this thing? That's gonna make it a worthwhile risk for the town? So, all those things said, I would request you guys say timeout like Tom Pender was suggesting. And I don't know that you can get an appraisal based on what we might do someday, but I think that that building's worth more money than that. And that's it. Thank you.
We appreciate your thoughts. One thing about the parking lot also is that the original idea was that they would have a larger footprint and they would create their own parking. But the council, and they were very willing to do that, but the council, at least I was concerned that I didn't want to let that land go. I wanted the city to be in charge of that parking lot, not them, because they're right in the corner and there's a driveway there. They could just say, no, no cars, no other cars come here. They'd have a lot of ability to impact parking. And so I wanted the council or the city, whoever in the future, I wanted them to be in charge of that parking lot on behalf of the public. And so that is an issue that they, they were willing to, and that's why the original appraisal was more. So they were willing to do a parking lot, but council was concerned about handing that corner lot over to someone else's ability to cause the public not to be able to use Lonnie, if you want to come up and-
It's funny how we're first name.
Can you, yeah?
I guess, it's okay. I've been listening, I've been gone for a month and I had the luck to be able to speak to city council over in Costa Mesa where I was and let them know what we're doing here. And so they had some very interesting feedback on that. On these gentlemen, and I'm gonna, I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna disagree with you. I, and I'll bet you, Ms. Graham, and if I'm in my motor chair, we cannot in any way get through gravel. I can't get through the dirt over there to go to Farmer's Market. And just an idea on our part, since there's doubt as to, A, the worth and B, the condition, why don't we have city council over there in two weeks? And let's all go in there, let's all sign a personal liability that if the floor collapses, we knew it. And perhaps prove a point of, A, the worth, B, I don't know who the lucky guy is that are going to get a couple of us, and I will bring everybody in a wheelchair in town. How we're going to get in, how we're going to get out, I think an outdoor elevator would be a smashing idea, but we're not in the city, and kids would break it or vandalize in two weeks' time. Inside, the structure, my daddy was a contractor in the big world. Inside elevators are going to take a lot more of the engineering that has to pass that lift. Part of this, I think you can get kicked back from the ADA as a write-off, but being the one who's out here photographing every parking lot sidewalk, you've heard me, and I am still not going away, there's no way. I've been in the building once, and at that point, I was on a cane and barely made it. And, you know, echo-wise, I wasn't under the impression, I was there with the E.S.C. ARC program. I wasn't under any impression that we were going to lose a floor from under us. The echo in the room, you can tell. But it, it might be a very valid idea for us to all go over there and meet over there and look at it and feel it, you know? Table, stand. If I could stand, I would. I can, but I'm not going to. Does that sound like a reasonable idea to think about?
Well, I do know that when you go in and remodel a building, it has to be handicapped accessible.
Yeah.
It's in city code, it's, so I would...
Our sidewalks aren't even handicap accessible, my dear...
Right. Well, some of them were built in the 1930s, and we're trying to fix them, but...
2014.
Yeah.
It's darn...
Okay, who had their hand up?
It makes no difference.
Okay.
Mr. Ilinski can go first, that's fine.
I just wanted to make a comment on how I feel about the appraisal of the building and that we, we hired, I'm not a professional appraiser, so I don't see that it would do much good for me to go over and say if it's worth 150 or not, but we did hire a professional to do that, who's done work for the city and for, you know, all across the valley. And I suspect that if we were to get it appraised again, that it would be different because the markets changed, but I wouldn't suspect that it'd be, you know, worth three times more all of a sudden. And, and I really don't feel like we should tell the appraiser that we've got, you know, we have plans to develop that parking lot, of course, but it's not done now. Right now, it's a dirt lot, and it may well be a dirt lot when you open your doors to the public, unfortunately. We've had plans for a long time to pave it, but we haven't done it yet. So I, I don't think it's fair to tell the appraiser, "These are our future plans, please consider that," because they haven't happened yet. We also plan to do a cultural park down there, we've discussed that for years, and that, too, would, would raise the value of all the property in the area, but it hasn't happened yet. And at our pace, it may not happen for a long, long time. So I feel like we hired a professional to do the appraisal, to go back out and hire another professional to reappraise it would simply be a waste of taxpayers' dollars. I feel like we're, we're doing the best we can. We could sit there as a city and just watch that building deteriorate, which is what we've been doing. And I think we have a good plan to try to get rid of some of the properties that we can't maintain. Get somebody in there that can restore that building before it just crumbles and we have to make the decision to drive a bulldozer over it. So...
Wait, 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 you're not...
I don't...
Okay, yeah. So, Mr. Garrison?
First, I want to start off by apologizing for being late, and I appreciate that you've held this meeting up so that I can be part of this conversation, although I'm sure that isn't the reason it's stayed so late. I, I really think this whole discussion and this whole idea of the sale of this property, and specifically this property, has kind of run its course. I think it's time to make a decision and move on. What I'm hearing from the crowd is, is a lot of frustration. There's a lot of frustration about the parking, which really isn't part of this process. There's a lot of frustration about the building. There's a lot of frustration coming from business owners, and I hear it a lot, about being on the wrong side of the track, this bridge-to-bridge idea. And if you're 50 feet on the other side of the bridge, you all of a sudden have to attain this whole completely different standard, even though you're still in a downtown, small, small lot, economically challenged area. So I, I understand where all these frustrations are coming from, but the way I look at it is, then they, we're going to get rid of a building that nobody's cared about for I don't even know how long. It was a rec center, it was falling down, we weren't putting the resources or the effort into maintaining it. It was used as a fire training exercise for years. That's one of the reasons why it has the wood damage, is you can't just continue to run hoses in there and forever and not expect damage. It, it's been a thrift star for the last two or three years, and there's been no significant work done to improve this building. And the minute we decide to get rid of this piece of the property, a piece of the city that we really haven't paid attention to, then all of a sudden, everybody comes unglued. We got an economic development opportunity sitting here at our doors to bring a new business into the area, bring more employment in, bring another draw to the area, bring another draw to the city, and a group of businesspeople that are willing to take that gamble and try and make this thing work. And all we're hearing is all the problems with selling the property and the parking and, and what side of the bridge you're on and that type of stuff. And I appreciate all those, but unfortunately, that's not, in my mind, what this decision is about. It leads to a bigger discussion, and I think we need to have those discussions, but I think we need to get back to having a discussion about what this is, is selling this piece of property and moving forward with creating an economic driver for the area.
Okay, any other comments, Mr. Pratt?
I just wanted to say, I, I repeat, and that's pretty much what I said at the beginning, I think probably before you arrived, that I weigh the pros and cons, and, yeah, who wants a building that's not going to be worth anything? And it really is in bad shape. I used to work out there every morning until we blessedly got a rec center in Cottonwood. And, I mean, I'd put my dumbbells down, they'd roll to the other side, I would think the roof was going to fall in on me. I mean, this place was in bad shape. There was mold, plumbing was horrible, electric was horrible.
Don't tell them.
They know.
I'm sure they know.
They know.
And I think, and I think, again, you don't want to get rid of the city building, but no, the, the pros outweigh the cons so much that it is an economic driver, it's going to be an economic driver for Old Town. And I think Mr. Garrison's right, we're at the point where we need to make a decision on this, and we can have discussions.
And just to fill you guys in, when I was mayor, we did put money into that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
It didn't sit there abused and used and such. There was money put into it.
Yeah, but it is in rough shape.
It is now.
It was when I was working out there, too.
Yes. Okay.
Sorry to keep being...
I want to, I want to make sure everybody feels heard.
Just one question, I guess, and, and I appreciate all of you guys, and I, you know, you have a lot of decisions you have to make, and you, and in my opinion, most of the time, you make the correct decision, okay? All I ask you is, that if I were to go out tomorrow and get a private, I'll go get a commercial appraiser, and I'll give him the conditions, and I come back with an appraisal that's say $200,000 or $300,000 more than what you're agreeing to sell this for, is that a service to the community? I just want you to, you know, I'm just pointing that out. That's, that, all I'm asking for is just to, and not a new appraiser, just tell them the conditions of what, what it is. And I'm not sure, maybe they're, they knew that there was a parking lot there. Maybe they come back and say, "No, I, I considered that." But I think that you need to look at that. You know, I don't know what the value of the building is. I'm here, you know, the first time I heard about it, I was like, one, one person submitted, in my opinion, it probably should have been thrown out, and you should have gone about it in a different direction. But that wasn't the goal. The goal was to get rid of this piece of property. And I know that the staff has done everything that they've been asked to do with bells and their, I mean, they've done, they've tried to accomplish almost the unaccomplishable thing here. So they've done a great job. I think where I'm at is, if this is the, the decision you make, you need to look at it, is, are you that confident that you're selling it for what the appraiser would, would say? And that's just it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The appraisal notes that there's a large gravel non-stripped parking area in the northeast corner of the lot. So the, the appraiser was aware, and of course, an appraisal is only a snapshot in time. And all we can ask an appraiser to do, and all an appraiser can do, is tell us what it is worth in its current condition at, at that particular time, in a range, probably...
You could get a different appraisal every week, if you went into the next few weeks.
This is very much art, not science.
Yes, Mr. Rubel?
Yes, I apologize, because I think I can address this question, Mayor and Council. I could be wrong, and I'm, I'm suspect, I understand that, but there was a sale after the appraisal for a similar square footage building in Old Town for quite a bit less, actually. So in fact...
Where was that located?
The church, the other church.
That's out of the...
It's the same, but an appraiser is going to...
Whoa, 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 no.
Pardon me. Appraiser's going to look, and again, I'm not an expert, appraiser's going to look at similar buildings of a similar age and a similar square footage. So potentially, the city is going to come back with an appraisal, let's just take that to its logical conclusion, that appraisal could come back less, which would then be potentially in our favor. So I'm not an expert, but I'm 90% sure there's a sale after that of a similar square footage of a similar age, and appraiser takes a snapshot a certain period of time, and yes, you could continue to appraise. And I can find the information on it if you really want to see it, but it's kind of irrelevant, like you said, to making this vote, but I wanted to address that because you're so specific about it. It would probably appraise for less, not more, based on the fact that I know of the sale that happened, I believe it's after the date of the appraisal, for whatever it's worth.
Thank you. So we appreciate everyone's comments, and we, we're glad that you're here and expressing how you feel. We appreciate everyone's opinion. So, Mr. Pratt?
Are we ready for a motion, do you think?
I think we've discussed it.
Okay.
Everyone's gotten to speak, everyone feels heard.
I move to approve the proposed sale of the old recreation center at 791 Main Street, along with an easement on the adjoining parcel to BOTC Real Estate Holdings LLC under the proposed terms and conditions reached between the proposed purchasers and city staff and such other additional terms as may be negotiated prior to the development of final purchase documents, and to authorize the mayor to execute the final agreement and other related documents.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Ilinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Pardon?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Two nays. So we had Mr. Pratt, Mr. Ilinski, the mayor, the vice mayor, and Mr. Garrison voting yes, and Mr. Haddig and Mr. Dowling voting no. Got them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, moving on to the next item, claims and adjustments.
I move to repay the claims.
I'll second that. Mr. Ilinski made the motion, the mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. For the executive session, the annual review of the city manager pursuant to ARS, discussion or consideration of employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, demotion, dismissal, salaries, disciplining or resignation of a public officer, appointee, or employee of any public body, except that with the exception of salary discussions, an officer, appointee, or employee may demand that the discussion or consideration occur at a public meeting. The council may vote to convene into executive session, subject to the city manager's right to compel the council to discuss this matter in open meeting. And then item number 12 is also discussion and possible action regarding the city manager's employment agreement. And the city manager got the flu yesterday and hadn't recovered today and will not be here tonight, so I would suggest that we postpone this item.
Sounds good.
Okay, do we need a, do we need a vote on that? Okay. So I move to adjourn. The mayor made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.